Hey, Susan. Thank you.
You're good?
Go anytime.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, and those in the audience and those on Zoom. Welcome to the Newton Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, April 60, 2024. The time is 6:02, and the meeting is now called to order. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Joe, if I may step in for one second, please. We have quite a bit of people here, and we have business with the cell phone tower tonight. So I just want to, as the board, we want to make sure everybody's on the same page as we go forward tonight. So in keeping with the town of Newton, New Hampshire residents, they voted on the 2024 warrant on March 12, 2024, in the passage of Article VII, the lease owned land for a communication tower. The Board of Selectmen has invited the two vendors who expressed interest in said project to present the company's proposal for the town of New Hampshire. The article passed by a vote of 639 yes to 194 no. This created the most votes cast. With that being said, so the object of tonight is for these gentlemen to put their information out, for everybody to be able to take in, and then, once that's done, the Board of Selectmen is going to make their choice on one of the two companies. When that happens, we will then have a public hearing, which will give all of you people an opportunity to come and question that company with any questions that you have about the cell tower, the operations of it, what's going to take place with it. But as far as tonight goes, tonight's a night for them to put their information out, what they're willing to do, what they're going to do if they're given the chance, and for the Board of Selectmen to ask any questions that they have. So I just wanted to put that out there so that this doesn't start to become a unraveled meeting, okay?
So with that said, just a couple announcements. If everyone would please make sure that their phones are unmuted, that would be appreciated. Dan Guide, our chairman, was going to be delayed tonight, so in the interim, I'll be chairing the meeting until he arrives. Selectman Mike Connolly will join us via Zoom. And for those residents in the audience who wish to speak during citizen input, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the records. For those on Zoom who wish to speak, please hit the appropriate button, and our administrator, Robyn Spocks, will acknowledge that and advise the chair, and also state your name and address. Citizen's input will be limited to three minutes, so please be respectful of the time limit and keep your discussion to non-redundant dialogue. So with that all said and done, we're pleased to have Alan Costello from Netcom Towers and Antenna Services here tonight to present their proposal to the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, Joe, do you want to open the citizen's input?
Oh, yes, citizen's input, excuse me. I went right over that. Citizen's input. If anybody has anything, please come forward to the podium.
Any hands up on Zoom?
No, no hands up.
Would you please state your name and address, please? Would you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm at Kipton 8 Maple Avenue.
Thank you.
I just have a question about the lease. This lease is behind the transfer station. We can't hear you. The lease is behind the transfer station, as I understand it, for the cell towers?
Yes.
Do you need people here? I thought it was pretty straightforward. Anyway, I was wondering if there were any...
I got it.
Okay.
In other words, the winning bid, the company that wins the lease, are they able to do whatever they want with that tract of land besides just putting up a tower?
No.
I mean, how much land are they going to lease? That entire package?
They will get to that when they talk about it. That's what tonight's all about, so that there's no hearsay about what's possible, what's going to happen. They're going to spell out exactly what their proposals are, so that everybody here will have that information.
Okay. Now, there is higher land right behind it on Stony Ridge. I would think that higher land would be advantageous rather than wetlands slower. So I'm just a little confused as to why that site was picked over a higher, you know, a hill that's just maybe 1,000 feet behind it. What is it about that tract of land that's so appealing?
When they give their presentation, they'll be able to fill you in on everything.
They picked the land then, not the town.
They did an assessment. They went around the town, and those were the places that they came to for that.
Just kind of curious, because as I drive down a curvy road, I see there's a hill there that's easily accessible without going through someone's property, whereas behind Maple Avenue, you have to go between two houses. So, I don't know, on the face of it, it just looks like it's more practical to put it on Stony Ridge rather than in the wetlands. But, you know, it's just a casual observation on my part. I don't really know why the company would pick one tract of land over the other.
Yes.
I would think they would want higher land that doesn't require going across people's property. Just trying to make sense of it.
Well, I understand.
Okay, well, that's just my piece.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Sandra Ostroff. Are we going to... Audience can comment again after his presentation, or is this only...
There's going to be any comments. Like I said, we're going to hold a public hearing once the board chooses a company, and that'll give everybody the opportunity to be asking questions like that gentleman just did.
Right, because that was what I was going to say, that this is a conditional use permit for the cell tower, so that all has to go through the planning board, and they have to approve it. So the planning board itself is going to have to have numerous meetings that the town would have to have input into.
The whole process will be transparent, Sandy.
Right, so like you said...
Because it still has to go to planning, and conservation, and everything else. It'll be totally transparent. It's nothing that's going to get done overnight.
Right, so there's not going to be comments when they have planning board meetings.
It'll probably take a year to get through.
So he'll know.
Sure. Thank you.
Julia Fitzgerald, 37 Maple Ave. I actually had quite a few comments, but I will pare it down. I want to point out Section 37 of the zoning ordinances related to personal wireless service facilities. If people can go read through that, there's a whole bunch about environment and co-location and all of that. As Veritex Towers blatantly pointed out in their presentation, there is a clause in the ordinances that basically renders all of that exempt if the tower is located on town property. So I'm wondering, is the board planning to give this exemption? What exactly would be included in the exemption? Is high regulation above ground, setbacks? I think it's important for everyone to understand the full scope of this conversation. I know there's a need to support emergency management personnel with communications. Newton firefighters can't be heard in buildings. Newton's known by other towers as having horrific clarity with communications. I'm wondering what happened to create this issue? How long has it existed? Is it because the old fire station had a small tower? New one doesn't have anything? Why has nothing been done until now? The emergency management report in the 2023 town report lists a new public safety antenna as being one of the outcomes from the American Recovery Plan Act grant money? Is that referring to the cell tower? What criteria and metrics are being used to determine best location? What is the least possible range for that metric, and what sites meet that requirement? At a previous board meeting, Ms. McCarthy said the tower would allow public safety radios to better function because the town will be on top of the tower. It is the town will be on top of the tower. Is it absolutely necessary for police and fire apparatus to be at the top? What are the other levels they'll function at? What's the minimum level they'll function at? Is emergency equipment cellular technology or something else? Several local departments don't even use cell communications. Newburyport Fire and Police is still all landline-based. Have all other reasonable opportunities for co-location been exhausted, including local towers home of the American Tower at 85 South Main and Tower 373099 and the East Kingston Industrial Park per zoning regulations? Sean Libby at American Tower, welcome to call from the town engineer to discuss options. Why can't this be sited on the 5.5 acres of land in the municipal complex? Back to the label of best, best is a very relative word. What criteria did the MD use to determine Maple Ave as the best site? A cell tower needs three-phase power. Maple only has single phase. Is there a plan to run three-phase power down Maple Avenue? The road frontage on Maple Ave is not wide enough without cutting into a budding property. It is less than one-third of that required by Newton for legal law. It is not wide enough without cutting trees. There is only 13 feet between trees larger than 15 inches in diameter, with a measurement taken at a height of four feet. The site is zone residential A, unlike 85 South Main, which is zone commercial. Can an access road and tower pad be built without going over the percentage of wetland which cannot be made non-draining? What is the total height of the tower? Will the tower have a whip and ten at the top? And if so, does the site include the length of the whip? Are the board and residents aware that due to the passing of Section 6409A of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, once a tower is built, it can go up to 20 feet higher with absolutely no public process? What kind of wireless tower? Freestanding or guide structure? Monopole, monopine, lattice? What type of pad required? How deep does the pad have to be dug? What is the power source? Will there be 5G in the tower? What sitework is required to build tower unspecified location? Dredge and fill specifications on perimeter fence? Constant maintenance and safety inspections? How often and who will conduct? Type of fuel storage written plan for spill? What if the tower fails to comply with codes and standards and constitutes a danger to persons or property? Tree falls on fence removal? Time period for compliance? What is the fall zone for this tower, and who is the engineer to determine it? Who is the town engineer working on the project? I would like to respectfully request the Board of Selectmen provide a full, complete plan listing details of each of the steps in the process, including an expected timeline, steps already taken, and all upcoming steps which would bring this project to fruition. I also request the full written report of the pros and cons of the 16 sites previously considered to be made available to the public within 30 days of this meeting. When will the environmental impact assessment be completed, and by whom? Does the Conservation Commission plan to provide written approval for the removal of the stone walls and trees on the property? Has FCC Form 620 FCC Wireless Telecommunications Bureau new tower submission packet been filed? How do we get a copy? How will legal notices regarding this project be distributed? Has the regional notification per RSA 12K7 been done? How and when will residents know if a conditional use permit is filed by the cell company? When will the sitework for residents be held? When will balloon visibility study be conducted? Is the town building inspector trained in how to monitor RF frequencies? At the April 2 board meeting, a resident spoke of metal plates in his neck, his ability to feel RF energy, and his intention to file a lawsuit should his health be impacted by a new cell tower. It is imperative that the town have the correct liability insurance to protect it from serious and costly lawsuits from residents. Has the town of Newton obtained proper pollution insurance for cell tower installations? The town must have bulletproof insurance liability coverage from a licensed third-party for injuries and illnesses caused by RF and EMR exposures.
Would you present a copy?
Insurance cannot be through a self-insured indemnity substitute by the telecom or any company listed on the license agreement. It is not sufficient. I won't even get into all the safety, but Mr. Marshon tried to hand me a printout last couple of meetings ago from the American Cancer Society, believing it to indicate position that radiation is safe. He either did not see or chose to ignore the paragraph which reads, quote, "At this time, there is no strong evidence that exposure to RF waves from cell towers causes any noticeable health effects. However, this does not mean that the RF waves from cell towers have been proven to be absolutely safe. Most expert organizations agree that more research is needed to help clarify this, especially for any possible long-term effects," end quote. It's a bad assumption to believe something is safe when the findings indicate more study is needed. Of course, no one wants to believe cell communications might not be safe. 95% of U.S. adults use a cellphone. Makes their lives easier, providing multiple methods of communication and entertainment. But it's important for this board to remember, cell towers emit large amounts of electromagnetic radiation, and are a constant. They don't get turned off. The New Hampshire Legislature commissioned a study, the New Hampshire 5G Commission findings on wireless safety, and our review of the results can be viewed at tinyworld.com is wireless safe. If you don't have time to watch the whole video, at least watch the first five minutes. And what if there's a fuel leak? We'll be there in a notice.
Mrs. Fitzgerald, we've opted three minutes per person?
Yep.
You're over that limit, please.
You've well exceeded that.
Three minutes. I can have somebody finish it for me if you'd like.
Would you present a copy of that to our administrator so we can have it on file, please?
Mm-hmm.
And thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, then we will...
I'll speak. So I'm going to present the other side, I guess. So, Rick Faulkner, 49 North Main Street. I'm here to speak as a citizen of Newton and a homeowner. No one's paying me to speak. I live on North Main, where on good days, we can get a single bar of cell signal, and that goes in and out with different providers. I live not that far from the proposed site off Maple, as the crow or radio waves fly. If you're traveling north on Main or Highway 108, and you reach the horrible intersection where Amesbury Road, Maple, and Main Street meet, there's basically no cell signal once you reach that spot. I think most of us here use cell phones, or Wi-Fi, or both. Our household has had to call emergency services three times in the last few years. If we didn't have Wi-Fi and cell phones that work with our home internet, it would have been hard to do that and stay on the line with the dispatcher while moving about. And I'm grateful that it worked, and I'm grateful for our first responders. I would like to have a reliable cellphone signal at our home, and so I'm in favor of the tower, as are most folks of the town who came to vote for it on March 21st. 194 voted no, but the great majority, 639 of us, voted yes for the communication tower. The proposed tower wouldn't just help me and my household to have better cell signal, but more importantly, it would help our police and fire personnel. Currently, we have dead spots for their radios, which this tower would help alleviate at no monetary cost to the town. I appreciate some folks' half-concern about health effects and for our town land, but personally, I have not seen conclusive evidence to sway me to this view. To the contrary, on the health side of the argument, what I have seen from recognized sources about health and well-being, like the American Cancer Society and the Mayo Clinic, is that there is no definitive link to harms from cancer from cellphone tower emissions. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. If there's no further comment, then I would like to...
Yes, sir.
Certainly.
Thank you. My name is Robert King, and I live on 8 Lincoln Road, right up the street. I am a veteran, and I serve my country with an honorable discharge, and I believe that I do have rights. Unfortunately, I am handicapped because I have titanium plates in my neck and my hip. I cannot carry a cellphone. I can have a cellphone in my car, but not next to my heart or in my body. And whenever I go buy a cellphone tower, the vibrations in my body are unbelievable, and I cannot live with this for 24/7. So anybody in favor of this, I am not against of having a cellphone tower in Newton. I am a fair person, as long as it's on the right site. So you take your cellphone tower and put it in your backyard, not mine.
So with that said, then we'll close the citizen's input portion. I invite Mr. Costello up from Netcom to give his presentation.
Good evening. Thank you to the board, the town administration, and to the residents of Newton. My name is Alan Costello, and the name of my company is Netcom Wireless Facilities. Netcom Wireless Facilities is a multifaceted communications company. We construct towers, we own towers, we do work on towers, the different antennas that would be used for public safety, radio, television, two-way radio, anything that might be used on a structure. I've been doing... Netcom Wireless has been around since 1990, and I have been in the tower industry since I had the privilege of being here last October to speak to the board while they were inquiring to see if a communications tower is something that might be beneficial to the town. And a little bit of history, what brought Netcom Wireless into the picture was we've had a long-term relationship with your present fire chief. Prior to him working here in Newton, he worked at a community in southeastern Massachusetts, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, where we have a tower, coincidentally. And we, at that time, allowed the fire department to use the top of the tower, very much like we hoped to do with this particular project, and it was a benefit to the town. But we, better than that, we developed a relationship with the chief. And when he moved on and came up and served this great town, he stayed in touch with us, and we've helped him in different communication facets for the last several years. Purchase of radios for the radio system, repair radios, lights, and equipment for the fire trucks. We sort of do a one-stop public safety type shop in at Netcom. Several years ago, due to a problem or a blind spot or a dead spot around town here, the chief had some concerns, and he had hoped to put a tower up at the fire station. And we looked into that for him, and we shot some numbers around at the potential of doing just that. For whatever reason, it didn't go forward, and time went away, and it was sort of forgotten about. Fast forward to about two years ago, when the problem persisted with the dead zone, and it was compromising the chief's public safety radio patent. There was a couple of sections in town that was... There was subpar for radio communications. In this day and age, everything is highly technological, and it puts some people at a disadvantage. So he asked again, is there anything we might do to try to help him improve his radio coverage? And at that time, the idea was floated, because we have a history of doing this in Netcom. We have half a dozen joint ventures with municipalities. And we talked about the possibility of putting up a tower that would fulfill his needs in this dead zone. And we came up here one summer's day last summer, I don't remember the exact date, and we did a field trip, and we visited, to this gentleman's concern, we visited all 17 town-owned pieces of property that would be eligible to hopefully put a tower if the townspeople felt that that's what they wanted. Two or three of the sites came to the top, and the very best facility, the very best site, happened to be the transfer station, because that helped the chief and the public safety sector the best as far as filling in the dead spot of their coverage. So since October, when I was here and we were floating the idea to the select board, that's sort of been the primary site that we've been concentrating on if the project went forward in town meeting. So I was happy to hear, a couple weeks ago, the town meeting passed not only the tower, but the ability to get into a long-term lease, because that makes it equitable, or it makes it economical for us to get involved. And just quickly, and not to go too far aside, but in my hometown of Plymouth, Massachusetts, I'm a 12-year town meeting member, and I see these type of projects come up, and I don't have any involvement due to a conflict, but I advocate for them every time they come up, because it's a revenue source that helps our town. And not only will this tower take care of the shortcomings of the radio patent, but it's a revenue center for the town, and it could be very profitable over a long period of time. It's a win-win situation for the town, for the fire department, for the carriers, and for you, the resident. You have better cellphone coverage, you have better public safety coverage. So that is the history of what brought us here six months ago, and I'm sort of delighted to be invited back here tonight to expand on that, that the town... And I understand there's some concerns, and those concerns should be and will be addressed. But it's exciting for the town to go forward with this for all of the benefits that you'll see as it lays out. So what my hope would be to do is Netcom Wireless Facilities, once the process is vetted and public meetings have been taken place, and all of the questions have been answered, and the vast majority of people are satisfied, but what we would do is, on this site, let's just stick with the transfer station at this time, because it seems the most likely. But what Netcom Wireless would like to do is to install a 180-foot tower. It could be a monopole-style tower that you've seen in the past, where it's a single pipe-type structure, or it could be a lattice tower with three legs in the traditional criss-cross effect. But what you're going to get with that structure, once it's placed properly on the transfer station property, is you're going to have, for the town, complete free access to the top of the tower, for all of your public safety, DPW, EMS, anything that you might need, the town gets free use, uninterrupted use. No one penetrates that top plane of the tower. You also get free inspections yearly. You get free installation of any antennas, cable, dishes that might increase Wi-Fi coverage, or any type of technology in the future. What Netcom gets, and I understand some people are saying, you know, what's this guy from Plymouth doing up here? He's going to put a tower on my backyard. I understand that. But what we're going to do is we're going to put the tower up at our own expense, and this is what we typically do for a lot of municipalities. Not a lot, half a dozen municipalities. It's a great win-win for municipalities. And we would market the tower to all the traditional cellphone carriers that you all, well, most of you would have in your pocket today. Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Dish Network, I'm not sure if it's in this market, but it will be shortly. And we would collect a monthly rent. But we don't collect it and keep it all. We're going to enter into the town, with the town, a partnership, so that if we fill the slots, and like I said, it'll be 180 feet, a four-carrier means it's engineered to hold four carriers, four of these AT&amp;T and Horizons of the world that we talked about. It will withstand 100... In this region, I think it's 120 mile-an-hour winds, completely encapsulated in ice. It could never... It's just engineered. It won't fall over. But in the event it did fall over, hypothetically, it would fall within itself, so the fall zone would be one-to-one. And when we put the... Site the tower on the transfer station, that one-for-one would not let the tower fall off of the property line. So I'm cognizant of that. I wouldn't want to have anyone living anywhere near it if it was suspect. But this tower is engineered from day one to be strong and be safe, and it's historically, like I said, I've been putting these up since 1985, and done correctly, and engineered correctly, and done the way your town board is doing it today. and engineered correctly and done the way your town board is doing it today, you're going to get a very nice product that most everyone will, and I don't want to minimize it, but most everyone will forget about after it's installed, it just blends in. Your phones will work in your driveway, they'll work down the street, they'll work in any areas that presently are suspect, your public safety will, radio will work far better than it does today, the cell coverage will be all concentrated, the tower is robust enough to hold four carriers, so you're not going to need a second tower anywhere close to that. So some cities and towns like that, they don't want to host smaller towers, they'd rather have one tower that's strong enough to hold all the carriers. So that's the plan in the hope of Netcom with the help and direction of the select board. That's what we would hope to do. As far as the dollar value for the revenue, done correctly, the town in the first year could realize, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars. And historically, the town of Swansea, Mass., the town of Dartmouth, Mass., we've already been in long-term relationships, near twenty years for both of them. And they've both just under a million dollars, that Netcom has written a check to them over the course of twenty years. And not so much for Dartmouth because Dartmouth has some money in the town, but Swansea just couldn't have made it, quite honestly, if they didn't have that extra money. They built a public safety building and they couldn't even afford a tower, they didn't even have it on the plans. So we were able to go in there and it has just been a model situation, it's worked really well. They have good communications, they're making money, and it just works. So, I hope that at the end of the public process, everyone's questions are answered, but I think you'll feel pretty comfortable at the end that it's a good deal as a resident. And like I said, as a resident of my town, I voted for these type of projects, if I lived here, I would vote for it. But I would ask the questions and make sure you get the answers that you like. So, that's in a nutshell what Netcom would like to do and talk to the board about and be involved in the next step, or at least be able to answer any questions that you might have going forward. But sort of piggybacking on the October presentation, we would end up with a hundred-and-eighty-foot self-support tower at the transfer station. We'd have a six-foot fence around the whole structure for security and for safety. Six foot with a foot of bobbler wire above it, that's pretty standard in the industry. It would be unpainted because it does not exceed two-hundred feet and it would be unlit. Some people really get upset and I can understand it if it's lit and it's, at night, it could be really bothersome.
How loud is it?
Loud?
Yeah, it doesn't make, like...
There's no noise that emanates from the tower in ninety-nine percent of any day or night. If you have a heavy wind, fifty, sixty mile-an-hour winds, you might occasionally on some sort of an antenna that might have a piece of aluminum or a light piece of metal, you might have some whistling, but, you know, truth be told, they're silent, they don't make a sound. There's no noise from any of the antennas, there's no noise from any of the public safety antennas, no noise from the cell phone tower antennas. You know, we get to this question and answer period. The only other noise you might see is occasionally during, once a week or once every couple of weeks, if the town elects to or if a carrier elects to, they sometimes have backup power, a generator system, and they might exercise the generator for half an hour on a Tuesday morning. So there is, you know, I don't want to say that there's never any sound, but that would be the extent of the sound. And that's been my, that's been my experience. From the top of the tower, once in a while, an oddball harmonic noise from a heavy wind, but other than that, you won't hear anything. And like I said, it's sort of a weird phenomenon. Once it's up, most people, it blends, most people won't even know it's there, won't even notice it.
Because I walk up there constantly. That's my walking...
I can appreciate that and, you know, it'll be, you'll see it if I'm going to be wrong, but it'll blend, they just blend. And, you know, I go to a barbecue, I go to a barbecue any day of the week, talk to somebody from any town, and I do this sometimes, I really do, I'll ask them, you know, where do you live? Well, I live at the corner of Elm Street and Main Street. I say, oh, there's a tower two blocks down. What are you talking about? I've never seen a tower there. They just don't, they just blend, they become part of the scenery, as, you know, as ugly as they can be, I'm not going to for a second try to defend that they're attractive, but they can be ugly, but they blend. And the other thing is, now, you know, I appreciate some people don't have a cell phone and that's great, some days I wish I didn't have one, but ninety-nine percent of the people need the cell phone to work and would like it to work for data, not so much talking, and I've said this to the board when I was here last time, data, everybody is on for data, not for voice any longer, but that's what you'll end up, you'll end up with a state-of-the-art project that satisfies all those needs. Any questions, anything I might have missed, anything that I...
You had stated before that you guys are the ones that will come, you'll maintain that area, the dead wood, the trees, the overgrown greenery when it starts to encumber the cell phone tower, you guys take care of all of that at no charge to the town?
Yeah, we would take care of all of that and to answer one gentleman's question, the area that we would take, traditionally we would take a hundred-foot by a hundred-foot square and we would fence that in. And inside that fenced-in area would be the tower and any of the equipment shelters that the carriers or the town has, they have to have equipment shelters at the base of the tower to accommodate their equipment, you know, the radios that make, you know, make everything talk. So all of that is encased inside this six-foot fence. The area in the compound is gravel with a three-quarter inch stone, so overgrowth is minimized, I mean, you do get some, don't get me wrong, but it's in our best interest to keep it well-maintained so it doesn't get overgrown because there's people walking in there, technicians walk in there as far as traffic from the carriers or even for the public safety for that matter. You might see, once a month, a van pull up to the tower and a technician go in there and take some readings, maybe fix some equipment, but there's no customer traffic, there's no noise or construction activity. You know, the timeframe to build one of these towers is probably ninety days from when we break ground to when we're a hundred percent done. And after that ninety days, there's no evident construction activity ever again. Now, there might be occasionally, like I said, a technician there or if the technologies, and I don't want to get too deep in it, but if the technologies change and the antennas that we, you know, everybody's heard of 4G and 5G and that kind of thing. Every few years, today's technology will become obsolete, so you might see a crew in there for three or four days to change the antennas, change the cables and update the technology, but there's very little traffic day in and day out there, so you...
So they build a road up there?
Come on, come on, excuse me.
Questions?
I'm sorry?
When we have the public hearing, please.
Yeah, the compound would be, you know, accessible, it would be safe and it would be gated to keep the, you know, a second layer of security, there'd be no one back anywhere near the tower that shouldn't be there. And that's our hope, that's our hope.
Alan, last time you were here, you would mention that you would provide a generator for us as well?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, Trish, you asked me, I actually have a generator, a couple generators just hanging around, I would give it day one, I mean, and so the town would have backup power at their equipment, so it's another plus. Any type of weather event, any type of lost power event, the fire department, police department, DPW would not suffer any loss of their radio coverage.
I'm sorry, but we were told that tonight was our opportunity to ask questions.
At the public hearing when we choose.
I'm sorry? I have to pause, I need to hear you.
What about the road maintenance, plowing snow if they're in there every month?
Well, that's actually very easy, as far as plowing snow, we take care of that in-house. We hit all of our facilities and plow them ourselves unless, like this one's a little bit out of the way, quite honestly, for coming out of Plymouth or Fairhaven or Dartmouth, I would contract, I would contract a local guy or a local company right here, it would be plowed immediately because we need to get access. If Verizon has a problem or if the chief has a problem and can't get out to the back of the tower, get out to the equipment, I don't want to get that phone call, so we plow right away. The road will be gravel, we don't typically pave them, but we do it hard-packed gravel and it's done professionally, that road's going to be around for fifty years. So, it's in our best interest to do that, so we do good site work so that we don't have any ticky-tack type problem, it's easier to do it right at the beginning.
Excellent. Any questions?
We really, this isn't the night to do that. I understand you're all here, you all have concerns, but we haven't even selected a vendor yet and that's after that selected, we will have a public hearing where you'll be able to ask all the questions you want. Tonight is not that night because it's not, we haven't selected a vendor yet, so it's kind of not the time to do it. There's a process and we're trying to follow this process that we're going through. I understand he wants to answer your questions and he probably will, so we'll leave him company, but we haven't selected a company yet to do that. And that's the time when we'll have the public hearing and you guys can ask questions and he'll answer, whatever company you choose, we'll answer those questions.
But Mr. Cott, per some ordinance, co-location, all those possibilities of co-location on existing towers are supposed to be exhausted prior to going to a new cell tower?
We're not discussing that tonight, we're not. They're presenting their proposal for the cell towers.
You just said you were picking a company tonight.
I did not say that, I said after we pick a company, there will be a public hearing where you'll be able to ask questions.
So, by zoning coordinates, it says co-location?
We're not doing that tonight.
But you're saying we're doing it after we choose a company?
It's been voted on, locations aren't even voted on by the residents of Newton.
Clarify the location then because we keep hearing it's behind the transfer station. The waters are open from...
The tax map is the location, the exact location has not been nailed down yet until we select a company.
Tax map, that...
That's the location.
That's not behind the transfer station. I started the town part.
We're not doing this tonight, we're not doing this tonight. Public hearing, you're free to come and ask us any questions you want, we're not doing that tonight.
Do we have two companies?
Yes.
Right now, we do.
So this gentleman has finished.
That's why, yeah, that's why we said this makes no sense to be asking questions back and forth when one of these gentlemen are not going to be here. So this is why we said, tonight is the night that we allow them to put the information out so that everybody will be more aware about the basics and what's going on and then to get deeper into the questions that were being proposed, that some of what Mrs. Fitzgerald was talking about would be appropriate to be able to discuss with whomever gets chosen because then they would be able to be answered appropriately by that person.
By then, the whole thing has been set in motion and it doesn't matter what questions...
Nothing has been set in motion. Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, excuse me, nothing has been set in motion yet because the board of selection has not chosen a vendor as of yet, so nothing is set in motion right now.
I think so, it's kind of what people are...
Really, did you guys just want to microphone, say your names, please?
I understand everybody's concerns, that's why we're having them back in again, giving us the same presentations they already gave us. They're doing it again, okay? What's that? That's when we pick a vendor, you can ask questions.
What about the solution, is there only solutions, the tower?
We're past that now. What's that?
Who else was involved in deciding on what the solution was?
The townspeople, when we put it on the ballot and they voted for it, we can't...
Vote for our tower or they vote for a solution?
The tower is the solution.
Is there other solutions?
There is, we've tried them. We've tried them. We've already had what he has put in town and it hasn't done anything that we wanted. If you continue, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to stress that, that as far as the co-location, what's driving this location is it's desperately needed for the fire department and public safety, that's a site that has to fill, that has to fill the dead spot, so the idea was that you're going to get the dead spot filled and you're going to get, be able to make some revenue from the cell carriers. Now, you're right, conventional wisdom is you try to co-locate as much as you can, but if technology is calling out the data of the area that has to have a tower to take care of the fire department, so that's, if that's any help to answer that question. And then, just to get my last thing in there, because I don't know what the terms that you're going to make a decision, but I wanted to be more specific and I think I talked about this in October, but where it's a four-carrier pole, and this is very boilerplate, Netcom would get the revenue from the very first carrier that rents off of the tower, one-hundred percent, they would get the revenue. The second carrier, the town would get forty-two percent of that carrier's annual rent. The third carrier, the town would get forty percent. And the fourth carrier, which would make the tower at capacity, they would receive thirty-five percent. So, and then that would increase all the dollar value that that represented, that forty-two, forty and thirty-five percent, that increases three percent yearly as a yearly escalator, and again, that's very common within the industry. So the town makes money if the tower makes money and it continues to make money throughout the life of the tower. So, having said that, I think that concludes my review of my visit here in October. Hopefully I added some new information and I'd appreciate your consideration when it comes time to decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brendan.
If we could have the gentleman from Vertex, please.
Good evening, my name is Brendan Gill, Vice President of Vertex Towers, in charge of site selection and acquisitions. A lot of the information as far as the site goes is going to be very similar to Mr. Costello. All the sites are pretty much built, standard spec, access driveways, compounds chain-linked fenced in, the tower foundations are designed off of the soil and the type of tower that is, there's two options between a monopole or a lattice tower and they both have their pros and cons, but they're pretty much equal from a structurability standpoint. Just to kind of clarify some of the points here, and I think a lot of general concern, is this project was brought to, myself at least, because of emergency communications. So for the police, fire, ambulance, any nine-one-one response. That network works differently than a traditional Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, US Cellular and Dish Network. Those are what are considered, you know, wireless carriers, commercial wireless carriers. So, the reason why this site was selected, the transfer station, is because it fills the need for emergency communications for the town of Newton. And it does, I sent over propagations from our radio frequency engineers that it does a good job kind of patching in the holes because right now where the town's whips are... whips or antennas are on the existing sites in town, they're at various heights, which doesn't play well with topography, vegetation, and things like that. So that's really the reason why there's such a gap in communications for emergency communications. The other side of it is wireless, so with your wireless carriers, that's a very different radio frequency, it's a very different propagation, they're all different networks. So traditionally, we used to be able to work very similar as a, you know, an emergency communication, where you could put a whip on the highest point in the area and boom a signal around, and you can get good service. The wireless network carriers, probably about 10 years ago now, 12 years ago, they switched over voice over data. So there used to be a wireless signal and a data signal. And then they made the determination, when smartphones came around, that the data signal was more beneficial, and so they put the voice over the data signal. What happened there is, one is that the networks grew, the demand for the networks grew, so there was a capacity issue. Then, because of the, the voice signal went basically in conjunction with the data signal, the networks almost shrank. So now we need lower sites, kind of where the point-to-point connection is to the, the device, and more of them, because the, the sites just don't cover the same radius as they used to. So that's kind of the, the difference in, in why we're here, talking about this site. The main point is because of the emergency communications. I've reached out to AT&amp;T, I've talked to Verizon, I've talked to T-Mobile and Dish Network. Currently, the site does not necessarily represent the best for them from a wireless network standpoint, but it does do a great job for the emergency communications standpoint. So there is a difference between the two. So I do think there might need to be a little bit more of a site acquisition into this. If the town wants to maximize wireless communications and emergency communications together, then potentially, you know, maybe a different site would be beneficial, but if we're focusing solely on emergency communications, then this site that was selected and voted upon by the town works extremely well. As far as the agreement goes, the, you know, we offered a, a straight revenue share, so from the first tenant on, the town would get 30% of the revenue. We take care of everything, just like Mr. Costello's firm does as well, from the construction, the regulatory, the maintenance, any aspects of the tower, we can have our riggers rig up the, the town equipment, do a generator and compound work as well, so all those are equal. We'd be even happy to work with Mr. Costello's firm on the rigging side. That's something we traditionally contract, contract out to a select few vendors. But I'm happy to answer any questions, go through any parts of the lease, and discuss any, you know, other concerns.
So I didn't, I wasn't able to ask him, but I'll ask you, and he might answer. The generators, what are they running on, propane or?
Typically, they run on diesel. It depends on, you know, the town has a choice between diesel or propane.
Okay.
The wireless carriers, they do an internal environmental report, they'll do a phase one, and depending on what comes back and the proximity to, say, wetlands or anything like that, they have a tolerance between, you know, propane or diesel. So both are safe, safe options, it just, you know, that's an internal call for them, because they would be the ones to deploy their own generators, so.
I'm good. Of course, I'm good. I'm good.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I, I'm going to call a five-minute recess right now, so we'll allow people to clear out, and we'll continue on with our meeting.
So Dan, they have the thing, so Netcom kept saying transfer station.
Mr. Chairman.
Exactly, well, that's my point.
Any of you know Robert's rules?
Point of order, you said three minutes.
No, bullshit, bullshit. So do I, do you know, is it in some, which one? I don't give a shit, 100%. Nobody knows, probably knew everybody's fault, get this mail, what was it, Halloween, huh? Guys, good luck.
And he's going to put this up before he even put it on the table.
Cable, right?
Just remember, when it starts back up, you have to unmute.
Yes.
Are you, hi, Hannah Locks?
Oh, you're unfortunate.
I know that name. I have him home all the time, I want to-
So I'm going to, once I get, I'm sending it to this guy, and he's going to be like, ask him for this, ask him for this, you know what I mean? Because he's an insider. 100%. I don't, that's what I'm saying.
Then all you have to buy is a milk.
That's a stupid, a coward.
Okay, he kind of reminds you. Yeah. I had to leave that technical. John Michael. He's being such a nice, you know, right? Yeah, that's why I walked in and turned it off. And he's trying to remind us, so this is, it probably should-
You've all ruined for a long time.
Yeah, that's how we were having a long.
I'll finish fighting with you later.
Oh, okay, bye.
I'm out of here, I've had enough fun.
Okay. Get him with the spoon. Oh, yeah, she was in the room, yeah, she would definitely have. I'm going to go outside.
Put them back on, Joe.
We're going to call this meeting back in order. Up next is the road agent for the April storm update. I believe that's you.
Good evening, Board, Mike Povero, Newton Road Agent. This is just, hey, how are you? This is just an informational update. I don't want to get too late in the season and not bring you guys up to speed. Last year, due to the weather events, I spent 10.7% of my entire operating budget on unanticipated weather events, and I'm not talking snow or anything like that, unanticipated storms, flooding, tree debris, stuff of that nature. This month, the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, we had a weather event, where part of the town lost power. We started off as a snow and ice event, which we cover, that's part of our winter maintenance, but it deteriorated quickly. We had at one point 19 separate areas in town with trees and power lines down. I think about a third of the town lost power. What that does for the highway department, that puts us into another level of dealing with a storm event. We have to do protective measures, still maintain the open roads as best as we can, push debris out of the way. Once the event ends, then we go into another phase, which is restoration of power with the power companies, moving stuff and getting power supplied back to the residents. And then there's a third phase, which is debris cleanup, which we still haven't completed yet, because we're trying to fix potholes and other things to get caught up with. I don't know, none of us know, what this season will bring for weather events till the end of December. If this is the only one, then this conversation's forgotten about, because it'll get absorbed in the highway budget. But if we have them like we did last year, and I spend $42,000 out of a budget that should be allocated to repairing roads, or doing shoulders, or doing stuff that is repairs to the highway infrastructure, we're going to need relief, so that I can do my targeted work that needs to be done, because we're desperately behind. That's the reason I'm, I brought this up as an agenda item tonight.
So when do you know if you're going to get any funds?
That's a great question.
I'm, I'm asking-
That's a great question.
Kind of eyeballing Trish and asking at the same time, but I, I just, because I know sometimes you do.
Yeah, we do. And not to complicate it, Trish and I have been working, yell to me if I'm, I'm way out of whack. We have probably combined between Trish and myself, have 300 hours into working with FEMA from last year's storms.
Right.
One in December, one in February, one in May.
In July.
One in July. We've walked around, we've filled out all the paperwork for FEMA, we haven't seen a dime yet, we don't know if we will.
Okay.
But we go through this procedure, once these events hit a threshold, that it falls into a category where FEMA will think about paying.
Sure.
Communities or a region. This one that we just went through? We've gotten paperwork sent to us to fill out a preliminary report, to put an application in for FEMA, have no idea when a check or if a check is coming.
Yeah.
And, and that's the problem, which is what we've talked about before. All the money that the highway department spent last year, let's say FEMA does come up with a dollar value that they're going to supply to the town, it can't go back into my budget. My budget is already closed last year.
Right.
And it can't go on this year, so I've already eaten that cost out of the highway department. So it's, you know, the town would get reimbursed, it's not a great reimbursement, because it's kind of going in the wrong.
Right.
Spot. But sometimes we get reimbursed, sometimes we have had it over the years, we'll get reimbursed in the same year. We did put a warrant article in this year that does allow the selectmen to take money that comes from FEMA, put it into that, and then allocate it to the departments that have spent their costs.
Sure.
Including fire and PD.
Yeah, of course, so, well, hopefully, we won't have to do that this year.
All right, but that's all this is, information, we'll keep you as it going, we'll keep up, fingers crossed we had no more weather events.
Sure, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Next on the agenda is appointment, police department hiring. Sure thing, I can, want me to go to the next one?
No, no, it's okay.
All right.
I have some good news. We have a part-time police officer who's been here for a number of years, he works in another community, and he asked Chief Kane if he could come back to a full-time position, and we would like to have you guys appoint Mr. Robert DeFlumery to a full-time sergeant position with the Newton Police Department effective April 15th, just yesterday. Again, it's adding to the head count, reducing the number of vacancies, and we're almost at full capacity.
Awesome.
So with that said, I move to appoint Robert DeFlumery to the position of a full-time sergeant with the Newton Police Department effective April 15, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Next appointment is for Tony?
Yep, appointment Deputy Town Clerk.
Want to read that one, Bob?
So I move to reappoint, or did you want to read the?
We just need you to-
Name that was sent. Give me one second. To Tony, how do you say your last name?
Sosiewicz.
Sosiewski.
Of the town of Newton and the county of Rockingham, state of New Hampshire, whereas there is a vacancy in the office of the Deputy Town Clerk slash Tax Collector in said town, and whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence in your ability and integrity to perform the duties of said office, we do hereby appoint you Tony?
Sosiewicz.
Yeah, easy for you to say. To the Deputy Town Clerk slash Tax Collector for said town, and upon your taking of the oath of office and having the appointments and the certificate of said oath of office recorded by the Town Clerk, you shall have the powers, perform the duties, and be subject to the liabilities of such office until the expiration date of your term of office, which shall be midnight on the 9th day of March 2027. So with that being said, do you want to say it, Joe?
Can I second that?
Well, you got to make the motion. I move to reappoint-
All right, I can, I can make the motion. I move to reappoint Tony Sosiewicz to Deputy Town Clerk slash Tax Collector for the town of Newton, effective April 16, 2024, with a term to expire March of 2027.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Veterans Tax Credit.
I move to approve the application of Veterans Tax Credit for Tax Map 2-1-8, beginning tax year 2024 per RSA 72:28-B.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye. The second one, I move to approve the application of Veterans Tax Credit for Tax Map 13-3-11-106, beginning tax year 2024 per RSA 72:28-B.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Elderly Tax Credit.
I move to approve the application for elderly tax exemption for Tax MAP eleven dash four dash four dash one, beginning tax year two thousand twenty-four, per RSA seventy-two colon thirty-nine A.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd just like to just say that all of these have been researched. It's not just somebody applies, they've all been vetted by Mary Jo and everything like that.
The assessor.
The assessor.
Contract assessor.
That one, yeah, okay.
Mike Conley's no longer on Zoom.
Okay.
Just noting.
Thank you. Elderly Tax Credit.
Just did that one.
You did that one?
Yeah.
Intent to cut.
This one's got Trisha's name on it.
Trisha, you got something on the intent to cut?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm on the spot.
I had a scene moment, sorry.
That's okay.
So on the intent to cut, it is on, I see, it's on a scenic road. I did call him to see what he was cutting, and when we had our conservation had a public hearing on it, and he is only cutting as far as the road, the scenic road, you know, we only have jurisdiction on the right-of-way, which is like about three feet in, and there's only two trees there that affect the town. What he does up in his property, you know, we can't control, we only can control the right-of-way. So Conservation's all set with that. He's doing what he's supposed to do.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Mr. Chairman, the motion would be to acknowledge receipt of the application of intent to cut.
Okay.
With the map and lot numbers.
As stated.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Did you wanna say something?
On the application for intent to cut, it's PA dash seven, it says that the assessor of the municipality is supposed to assign a number and look at the intent to cut. So has our assessment lady looked at it, or person looked at it?
She hasn't, she's given it to the board.
So she doesn't do that, the board looks at it and reviews it, and then it has to get sent to some other agencies.
She looks at it and checks it, and then they.
Just one second.
Yeah.
She's done her due diligence, and all the board is doing is acknowledging the application came in with the intent to cut.
Right.
Right. So then she'll do the other steps, or somebody else will?
She did, Robin did say that she did look at it and signed up on it.
So she's processed all the paperwork, and then she gives it to the board just to acknowledge, and then it goes back to her.
It's been assigned a number, then? Does that, do they know what the number is?
We'll get it.
Yeah, I can, I can get it for you or put you in touch with the assessor.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I have your name?
Oh, sorry. Sandra Estherbrook.
Okay. Yep, makes sense. Makes sense, I got it.
Planning Board Reorganization.
Mr. Chairman, it's really not a reorganization of the planning board, it's the planning board requesting this board appoint four individuals to seats on the Rockingham Planning Commission. We have two seats on the commission itself and two seats on a subcommittee called TAC. And the motions are before you. These are recommendations from the planning board, not necessarily a reorganization within the board itself.
Okay.
So with that all said, I move to appoint James L. Doggett as Rockingham Planning Commissioner for the term ending April two thousand twenty-nine.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to appoint John R. Silver as Rockingham Planning Commissioner for the term ending April two thousand twenty-nine.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to appoint Kostas Papa Christos as a Rockingham Planner TAC Member Commissioner for the term ending April two thousand twenty-nine.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to appoint Dennis Moran as a Rockingham Planning TAC Alternate Member Commissioner for the term ending April two thousand twenty-nine.
Second.
Motion made by Joe. All in favor? Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Tax Abatement from the Tax Collector.
Did you have a memo when you pack it?
I can read it, I have it here if you want it.
Got it.
Yeah. This is a memo to the Select Board members, from Mary Jo McCullough, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, dated April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, concerning an abatement request. I am requested an abatement for parcel one D seven dash thirteen dash fourteen dash six, six george's way, for accrued interest due to an error on my part. Payment was made on the first tax bill of two thousand twenty-three, and a paid receipt was given. However, payment was never applied, and the check was never processed. I believe the check was accidentally trashed. The owner submitted another check when she noticed a balance due on the second bill, but asked that the interest be forgiven. Because this was my error, I had her write the check for the actual bill without interest. Currently, the interest due is a hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, and accrues at three cents per day. If approved today, the amount I'm looking to abate is a hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Signed, Mary Jo McCullough, Newton, Newton, uh, Newton Town Clerk and Tax Collector.
I move to allow a tax abatement for parcel ID seven thirteen dash fourteen dash six, in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. So the next one is the removal of the town administrator out of New Hampshire Retirement System. A number of years ago, the Board of Selectmen voted to join the New Hampshire Retirement System. The vote was to allow full-time employees to participate in the pension system. Thereafter, participation is mandatory. Full-time police officers and firefighters do not have a choice, they are required to participate. New Hampshire RSA one hundred dash A is the chapter that governs the state's retirement system. RSA one hundred dash A colon twenty-two is called modifications. Within the paragraph, it describes a process which a community can vote to exempt a newly-hired chief administrative officer from compulsory membership in the system. Qualified professional town managers and town administrators are becoming increasingly difficult to find. In addition, most stay between three and five years. To become vested requires ten years of participation in the system. So a chief administrative officer, who worked in multiple communities, may or may not choose to become vested and not be eligible for a pension. In that case, the employee will get all of their contributions back, approximately seven percent of their earnings. However, towns like us contribute approximately thirteen point five-three percent into the system for the employee, but we don't get our contributions back. It's a financial decision and a way for us to continue on the path of being an attractive employer to exempt these executive positions from mandatory participation. And with that, I am looking for a motion.
I move that pursuant to New Hampshire RSA one hundred dash A colon twenty-two, to exempt the position of the town administrator from compulsory membership in the New Hampshire Retirement System, and to send a letter to the Retirement Systems Board of Trustees notifying them of our action.
Second that.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Approval for voluntary change of address, Seacoast Collaborative.
Well, I have it, I can read it if you like.
What's that?
I have it, if you can read it if you want, I'll read it for you.
Yeah, you can just read the first part.
Okay, the Sandborne Regional School District is informing the town of Newton of the naming of a road on Sandborne Regional School District property. The purpose of the naming the road is to avoid confusion with first responders and patrons visiting the facility. The Seacoast Learning Collaborative, new address will be one hundred, the one hundred, Carlton E. Stockwell Way, Newton, New Hampshire, oh three eight five eight. And a Seacoast Classic Academy, SCA, new address will be five hundred, Carlton E. Stockwell Way, Newton, New Hampshire, oh three eight five eight. The building is one unit and connected by a common fire exit between the two wings.
With that, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve the application for voluntary change of address upon the request of Sandborne Regional School District.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Manifests.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of seventy-two thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents for pay period March twenty-four through April sixth, two thousand twenty-four, with the payday of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Payroll includes no ARPA, zero-zero ARPA costs.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to approve and the manifest in the amount of two hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, with the payday of April tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Payment includes ninety-eight thousand two hundred seven dollars to Primex for workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, and property liability insurance, and sixty-nine thousand dollars, sixty-nine thousand one dollar and ninety-two cents for a tax-exempt leasing corp for leased equipment.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to approve withdrawal in the amount of five thousand six hundred ten dollars and two cents on the Cable Committee revolving account with the payday of April tenth, two thousand twenty-four, for an invoice to Ammon Network at the amount of five thousand three hundred seventy dollars, and Hewlett Packard Financial Services at the amount of two hundred forty dollars and two cents.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve withdrawal in the amount of five hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-one cents on the Police Special Detail Account with the payday of April tenth, two thousand twenty-four, for an invoice to West Bank.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to approve and the manifest in the amount of forty-eight thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and forty-two cents, with the payday of April sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. Payment includes sixteen, uh, okay.
You can get rid of the ninety-eight, sorry, Joe.
Okay, we're good. Sixteen thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-six cents to municipal resources, and nine thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars to firemanic supply equipment purchased.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Uh, let's go through the minutes.
I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes for the public hearing dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Second.
Motion made by Joe A, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes for the non-public hearing dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Motion made by Joe.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Fundraiser update on the two seventy-five, Joe?
Uh, yes, the, uh, the noon two seventy-five committee is having a fundraiser on Tuesday, the twenty-third of, of April, that's next Tuesday, at Flatbreds in Amesbury, Mass, for which they're giving us a percentage of the proceeds, and the fundraiser will be from five, uh, five PM to nine PM for any in-house or takeout orders. We'll also, we have a raffle there, we're raffling off a basket of cheer.
Say, a basket of cheer?
Basket of cheer. Yeah, it's gonna be Johnny.
To be consumed there.
No, no, it's gonna be Johnny.
Oh, all right.
Johnny, Jimmy, Jack, and the cousin Tito.
All right, now I get it. Like a basket of cheer.
Additionally, additionally, the Conservation Commission is sponsoring a planting, a planting, uh, yeah, a pollinator, planting a pollinator garden this coming Sunday, on the twenty-first, at the Bush, at the Bush property on, on one oh eight, at nine AM, and all residents and any interested parties are welcome to attend.
Good. Trisha, I am sure you have an update for Earth Day, or a reminder for Earth Day.
No, Joe just did it, so that's good.
Okay, all right, fantastic. Other business, it looks like we got an invoice from Aladdin Home Improvement for repairs completed to the police station?
Yes. If you're looking at the building, the left-hand side of the roof, flapping in the breeze because of the wind and the, and the rain, we didn't have the vendor's invoice until yesterday.
Yes.
Yesterday.
We wanted to get it done. This is a withdrawal from the Engineering and Renovation of Eight Merrimack Road Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay, perfect.
So with that said, I move to approve the invoice for Aladdin Home Improvements, number, that must be invoice number six eighty-four, for repair at the police station to the roof in the amount of one thousand four hundred dollars. Funds to come from the Engineering and Renovation Eight Merrimack Road Capital Reserve Fund Account Number four two three five eight three.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. All right.
I make a motion to adjourn to go with the non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two B.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.